I would like to call the meeting to order and ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the regular board meeting?
Madam President, I move that we change item 10.04 to 9.03 and move it to the action items.
I second that.
John Christensen?
Yay.
Chris DeLuca?
Yay.
Kathy Howland?
Aye.
And Ouch?
Yay.
A.J. Wilson?
Yay.
Motion carried. Okay. Do you have a motion to approve the meeting as... Sorry. We have a motion to approve the meeting with the move under action item.
I move that we approve the amended meeting.
I second.
John Christensen?
Yay.
Chris DeLuca?
Yay.
Kathy Howland?
Aye.
And Ouch?
Yay.
A.J. Wilson?
Yay.
Motion carried.
Everybody's a little rusty there.
Okay. We'll move on to the gifts. Item 4.1 is a donation to Pueblo County High School. Or, excuse me, Pueblo County School District 70 for tobacco prevention. Mr. Slobodick.
Good evening. So, the Department of Health and Environment had some extra money and they asked us if we would do some tobacco prevention stuff throughout the year. So, they gave us $4,500 to distribute to our high schools evenly and we'll have some events and things related to tobacco prevention throughout the year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, your next item is a donation to Pueblo County High School TAA Student Scholarships. Mr. DeLuca?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here this evening. County High on the next several agenda spots here. We are very gracious to receive an annual donation from the Sidio Kennedy Family Trust to the Arts Academy at Pueblo County High School. Ronnie Sidio is an alumni of Pueblo County High School and he has been instrumental in helping us support our students as they, you know, prepare through the academy offerings to attend college for various different performing arts segments. So, Roxanne Pinionelli helped to create this scholarship and this opportunity with the Sidio Kennedy family quite a few years ago and the generosity has continued to increase. I think they started with $5,000 and as you can see, it's grown to $15,000 a year. This year, we awarded five students with $3,000 scholarships and we're just really excited. And they definitely earned them through their performance and their achievement in the Arts Academy at Pueblo County High School. So, thank you for letting us be here to mention this gift this evening.
Next items are donations to Pueblo County High School Band, the Ag and FFA program. Mrs. Swardamondo?
Thank you for having me. I would like to acknowledge a donation of $9,355 to our high school band from the Ascend Performing Arts. Another donation of $1,000 to our band from Bruce and Sheila Wagner. And a donation of $750 to our Ag program and FFA from the Pueblo County Farm Bureau.
Thank you. And we have some more donations. Pueblo County High School Speech and Debate Program, JROTC, and the football team. Mr. Beha?
That's correct. Like Mr. DeLuca said, one of the best parts of county high school is the support from the community. As you can see here, I have three that I want to present today. We have a $1,000 donation for speech and debate from National Forensic League, National Speech and Debate Association. A $500 donation to JROTC from Ashley Valdez Excel Energy. And then a $4,000 donation to the PCH Football Team from TNT Electric.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the gifts as presented?
So moved. I second.
John Christensen?
Yay.
Chris DeLuca?
Yay.
Kathy Howland? Aye. And Ouch?
Yay.
A.J. Wilson?
Yay.
Motion carried.
Okay, next up, we have a grants update. Dr. Reverend Mestas.
Good evening. So, it's been a while since I've had the opportunity to come and present to you. And in the past six months, we've had what I would say is an outstanding semester in the grants department. We've received quite a few grants and I wanted to just come and talk to you a little bit about some of the most notable ones. So, first and foremost, we received a grant totaling $1.3 million that will provide fire panels to nine of our schools. So, within those schools, we have the four mountain schools. We've got LPE, North Mesa, South Mesa, Vineland, and LPE. So, okay, brand-new fire panels for each of those schools. Also, we've received two separate grants. The Health Professionals Grant and the School Counselor Grant, which will pay for counselors for most of our schools. So, the Health Professionals Grant pays for counselors at Cedar Ridge, Desert Sage, Prairie Winds, and Buella. And it also paid for the purchase of the Sources of Strength curriculum. The Counselor Corps Grant, right now, the first year, it's a planning year where the counselors will come together and build a K-12 counseling curriculum. And then, starting next year, it will fund counselors in Vineland Middle, LPE, LPI, and Rye High School. We also received a grant through House Bill 1350, the Regional Talent Initiative. We're in planning phases right now. I don't have exact numbers, but when it's all said and done, the intent of this grant is to provide support to prepare professionals and mentors to help our parents become certified teachers. We also received a grant, a second grant, from the Department of Homeland Security. It's called the SAFER Grant and that provides for infrastructure and training in the schools that weren't funded in the first round of SAFER. And that includes Rye High School, 70 Online and Baxter, Pueblo West High, Pueblo County High, Connect, and Swallows. And then, we recently, our most recent grant was the Mentor Supplemental Grant. And that's going to provide a mentor that's going to be utilized to support new teachers that come to the district on an emergency or alternative license. Altogether, we're talking about $4 million in grants over the last six months. Questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, next up is good news about Colorado Humanities. Dr. Martinez?
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for seeing me tonight. I have a letter from Colorado Humanities that I'd like to read to you. Dear Anthony, please accept my sincere and grateful appreciation for Pueblo County School District 70's in-kind donation of 87 volunteer hours, venue space, supplies, and printing for the Mother Reed/Father Reed Colorado 2023, valued at $34,693. Your generosity helps us contain expenses and will enable us to more fully support and develop outstanding humanities education programs throughout the state in communities large and small. The success of Colorado Humanities programs is due in no small part to the interest and support of people like you. On behalf of our board and staff, I thank you. We are happy to be able to count you among friends of the Colorado Humanities in Colorado. So, Colorado Humanities came in late June and did a training for all of our kindergarten, preschool, preschool, kindergarten, first, and second grade teachers. We had 42 of them in the room to do an early literacy program. So, with some of my grant money from preschool with CLSD, I'm able to buy books that we're going to give to families to start kids' libraries. And they came in and they did about a $12,000 training essentially for free. So, we provided them the space. I provided the printing, some of the materials that they needed, and they came in and did the training for us. It was a powerful training. It was great to see our preschool staff partnered with our kindergarten and first grade teachers, co-planning some events, literacy events for our families. And so, this was a thank you from Colorado Humanities. For your support.
Great, thank you. Okay, next up, we have information from the board and superintendents. Let's start with Ms. Ryan.
Well, first, I want to say we had a very successful August 3rd for our return back to school. It was nice to have every single employee represented. I believe there were around 900 people in the convention center for breakfast. Obviously, not everybody was able to attend, but 900 is a pretty good showing. And then, the PD date, thank you, Dr. Martinez. I think he did an excellent job of planning opportunities for our staff to come together and have academic conversations. And so, I appreciate that. And I know they appreciate it and I heard a lot of really positive feedback. The other thing that I need to talk about is Liberty Point Elementary. They're working like crazy to get it going, but we felt it was important to make sure that our K-5 parents had that opportunity to be able to really see their kids off and not just drop them off and drive on. And we really couldn't do that with the way that the bus loop, the parent loop are currently under construction. And so, we really feel that by Monday, it will be fully operational so that parents can drop their kids off and if they needed to, even walk their kindergarteners in to say goodbye to them. And we know how important that is for parents, especially with those little guys. So, we just felt that delaying it not starting on Thursday and starting on Monday would be a better option for Liberty Point Elementary. But I do appreciate all of the hard work that's been going on over the summer, Ted, because we have been making a huge push to get all of these schools open by Thursday. And, you know, pretty good odds. We'll have all of them but one open by Thursday. And so, that's better than we did last year and we got a lot of work done over the summer. And if you get a chance to go through some of these schools, they look great. And Liberty Point Elementary looks amazing, especially on the inside. And when we're done with the outside, it's going to look like a complete new school. So, I'm just really proud of all of the work that we've done over the summer.
Kind of jump on what Ms. Ryan said. We had a lot of good PD happening over the last couple of weeks, starting with a lot of our district and school administrators attending the case conference, which is the annual conference that, up until COVID, was a very beneficial conference for a lot of our administrators. It's a time to collaborate within our district, outside of our district. And so, in talking with principals, sitting down at lunches with them, just listening to some of the sessions that they went through, I think we got a lot of good information that they could bring back to the district. And then, the day last Thursday was a great day. Dr. Martinez and his staff did a wonderful job. A lot of smiling faces, laughter, which is really good to see when people are coming back to work after a couple of months off. So, this is a great job and very excited to see the enthusiasm that all of our employees have. Moving forward to this year.
A.J., do you have anything for us?
Well, I actually attended LPE when it was Pueblo West Elementary and it was the only elementary school out in Pueblo West. And I got to go through it with Chris and Ted last week and it is amazing what is being done inside that building. It's really cool. Outside still needs some work, but I think they can get it done by Monday for sure, as long as the weather holds out. They're having to... We've had a very different summer this year with weather and, you know, my electric bill and my water bill sure likes it, but, you know, the water in the basement or the water at the schools and everywhere else in this community don't always appreciate it. So, they've done a great job. There were a ton of people working out there. Today, I drove by before we came here and they are working their butts off. So, thank you for cracking the whip and keeping them going, Ted. Yeah, I'm excited to see all the projects done. The high school parking lot, all of that's really coming around. So, that's about all I have.
Well, I would like to thank Mrs. Ryan and Mr. Petrie for being on top of things and making sure everything goes according to plan. My summer was very unusual. I started out with a wedding in Montana, which was a lot of fun. I don't know if you know the Irish. They get together at weddings and funerals, so it ended with a funeral last week. And slipped and fell in the bathroom. I think I broke my rib. So, I'm kind of not doing so great. So, but I'm here. So, that's the important thing. And I just, you know, I hope it's going to get better from here on out. And I want my green sweatshirt.
Chris, do you have anything to say?
Not a whole lot. The improvements to both ends of 36th Lane look like they're going to begin soon. So, CDOT's coming up with a pamphlet that they'll provide us so we can inform our communities basically on what that's going to look like. We're trying to hold them off on one end of 36th Lane so they don't have to do things twice, but we'll see how that goes. Other than that, bond projects have been... I mean, this was a lot easier summer than last year. Ted only used one thing of N-Assets, so... Budget cuts. So, that's... No, that's it for me.
I don't have anything tonight.
Come on, John, it's nice and cool in here. Take up some time.
I'm the same. I don't really have anything. I'm just looking forward to the new school year. So, we'll go ahead and move on. We have item 7.1, which is a presentation of the 2324 Benefits and Carriers. Mr. Vecchio? Thor?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. I'd like to introduce to you Dave Vecchio, who is our benefits broker, who has been working with our insurance committee this summer in regards to our renewal for our employee benefits for health, dental, and vision. So, I'll let him present.
Thank you, Stephanie, and good evening, members of the board. Before we start going over the information, I want to recognize Stephanie, Kim, and the HR team. They have been a pleasure to work with. These are big tasks and sometimes we need information quick and they've been very responsive. And your benefit committee, you know, we have a lot of clients and seeing people on your committee that understand benefits, ask the right questions, think big picture, and care about their peers, that's been very refreshing. And, you know, after the fourth meeting, it was clear to me that I was in a room of people involved in education because they just get it at a different level. So, I really feel good about this process. And it was... It's a process, what we do. So, kind of what's the starting point, right? When we first met, we always want to identify what's working and what can we solve for, right? So, the things that we're working, we really don't want to change, but the things that we need to solve for, right? How do we have more variety in benefit plans that are available? One of the key points was improving the member experience, right? So, that's a fancy term for four of the five plans were HMO plans that require a very specific referral, which was a pain point for both plan members and providers. But we have a lot of clients that have those plans, so when that came up, it didn't surprise me. And then, a broad nationwide network, right? Not a narrow HMO network. Because that same plan that had those restrictions also didn't have university hospital in it, right? And when we have a center of excellence in our state, not having access to that, that's a pain point. We see this in the industry. People that have chronic conditions and have maintenance medications at times with the rising cost, they just can't afford it. So, what does that do? That makes them non-compliant, right? That hurts their health, can lead to higher-cost claims. It's a bad experience, right? So, we're able to identify through some legislative items, an expanded preventive list that's going to give people pretty vast access to medications at no cost, $0 copay, right? So, that improves the member experience, helps keep them compliant. That's a true cost containment method. All that's great, but if nobody can afford it, being the district or the employees, it doesn't matter, right? So, we have to do it in a fashion where it's affordable, financially responsible, and compliant with the Affordable Care Act. So, and then, the last item wasn't really something we wanted to solve for, but it makes things better, right? Because all of the benefits right now, deductible, out-of-pocket, run January 1st through December 31st. The plans renew on November, right? So, there's some administrative challenges there, getting the member experience. So, could we get a renewal starting November 1st and take it out through all of 2024 and the next renewal would be January 1st, right? That just creates some real synergies. It was a process and as we worked through it, as it happens, certain carriers really started to rise to the top and check all the boxes we needed them to check. And so, the committee really made some recommendations that I think are going to provide great value. So, on the next page are the plans that the committee has really spent some time on with Cigna. One page back.
Sorry.
She's seen this a lot, so I can understand. And what's important to note on here is all these plans are nationwide network plans, right? So, open access anywhere in Cigna's network in the United States. You don't need a primary care doctor and you don't need referrals, so we solve for that. The three plans on the left are identical plans to what's in place now, just without the network restrictions. The two plans on the right were creative plan designs and one's very affordable, right? A group of your size that not have a HSA-eligible, high-deductible health plan, that's out of the norm because there's a lot of people that aren't heavy users of healthcare that would want a more affordable path to care. Having that expanded preventive list made it that much easier. And so, what you see in here, Cigna came to the districts with an offer of very attractive plans and rates. And common in the industry is a transition credit, moving from carrier A to carrier B. The Cigna's transition credit was $300,000. So, from an administrative standpoint, it is easier to have Cigna put that into the rates versus reduce the bill twice a year for $150,000 or once a year for $300,000. So, that $300,000 is included in these rates referenced here. Their district will still get a $10,000 credit for the new benefit admin platform. That's an IT credit, right, to help offset some of the costs of that tool. And then, the wellness dollars, right now, the district has $15,000. Cigna's bumped that up to $20,000, okay? So, if we start working through the process... Now, the enrollment numbers, we really had to project that because we don't know how people are going to see those two new plans. So, there might be more movement to those plans. But I think this page probably tells the story, right? The next one, the affordability factor, right? So, if you look in the left there, these are the current rates with United Healthcare. On a two-tier system, one of the other goals was go to a four-tier system because that's more in line with what other employers do. So, if you look through this, many employees are going to be paying less than they are now for a better product. That's rare. But then, if you look at... Or knowing that the renewal from United was 5.9%, which would add $40 to $60 on every employee. which would add 40 to 60 dollars on every employee cost, 110 to 240 dollars on the family cost. So when you compare Cigna to the renewal, it really makes sense, right? So you have some people that can hopefully afford maybe to cover dependents. If you have a single parent that couldn't maybe put their children on in the two-tier rate structure, maybe they can do that now. I think we'll see a lot of people that were on the higher-end plans really happy 'cause all those plans, you know, if you look at the middle plan, your employee only, your cost is dropping a hundred dollars a month. If you cover your family, you know, it's 250 dollars a month, right? For, for a very good product. So really feel like that piece of it made some sense as well. And as I said, as the conversation evolved, it really shifted to, towards this direction, right? So dental, uh, dental, obviously the premium's much lower, so you're not gonna see those significant financial advantages. There is a smaller advantage to the, to the employees and the district. But the real key to Delta was this. We're seeing statewide dental providers start to accept fewer insurance carriers. And we've seen this, you know, we have about 300 clients in the state of Colorado, so we're, we can see this evolve throughout the year. And MetLife is one of the carriers that is starting to lose providers. And there's no more frustrating thing for an employee to go to the dentist and say, oh, we don't take that anymore, right? 'Cause then you see, well, I'm paying for something that either I can't use or I can't maximize the value on. So Delta's got a robust network, so we solve for that. And Delta has a really cool program for kids. It's called a Right Start Kids Program. So a lot of the kids' services on the plan don't count to the out-of-pocket, right? So it gives more value for kids, obviously. That makes sense at every, every level. So the move to Delta just makes sense. And then BSP is the leader in vision services and vision plans, robust network, again, nationwide network. So we're able to look at BSP and enhance the benefits and do so for a very small increase. So again, as I said, as we walk through this with your committee, it really pointed to these decisions and, and I think there's value in, in all of the objectives we're met. With that, can I answer any questions?
We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have a presentation of the Army and JROTC resources. Steph Starcher, who can?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Steph Starcher Hugley. A lot of people are wondering like, what is military doing here? Um, I was given the invitation, Mrs. Ouch, to come and stand in front of you guys and preach what we are doing here. So we're here today to elaborate on the Army. That's what we're known for, that's why I'm here today. Um, the biggest thing that we have going on nowadays is under individuals to understand what the Army offers. Everyone gets this notion of individuals coming in and getting a one-sided training of, um, going to war, go to combat, and that's it. That's not the case for everyone that, you know, comes in our office day-to-day. Um, that was my case in particular, 'cause that's what I intended to do. Um, I've been here for eight years. I've traveled throughout the states, even overseas. Um, I've been stationed in Hawaii, um, moved here from Tennessee, been in Germany for a couple of months, and then I got my final tour of combat in Iraq in 2019. Wasn't pleasant, but it was a job I signed up to do because that's what I wanted to do. Um, not near for everybody, but somebody has to do it. So I'm here today to talk about what Army offers and how we can make individuals, your kids, uh, students, everyone that's under where, make more aware of what we offer and how we can benefit them and helping them achieve success in life. So initially, uh, biggest worry everyone has is college. Everyone believes, a lot of notion that we get is that we don't believe in the college route, which is not true. Education's number one. Um, if everyone knows you can't join without some type of diploma or certificate, might be a GED or high school diploma. So we push these kids, we, uh, throughout the schools, some of you might seen us throughout, um, we're pushing like, hey, you have to graduate. Without an education, you're nothing. And that's through us, through Walmart, Target, whoever they work for. So we are here to, to, to improve education and the rate of graduation. With that being said, uh, individuals understand how the benefits work through college. A lot of individuals like yourself might know of the GI Bill, which is a college benefit once you are transitioned out of the service. We also have another college benefit, which is tuition assistance, which is in-service opportunities. So like myself, I'm taking advantage of this, which is essentially $4,000 allotted to me every year, as long as I stay in. And I can use that towards with any degree I wanna go for. So right now, I'm currently working on my cybersecurity, um, degree through AMU, um, halfway through. And that's, you know, through the credits I have earned through the military, which a lot of people don't understand, like, you gotta start from ground zero. No, you do not. You can come in with previous education from any college or, you know, the education you gain from training that we provide throughout the Army can transition into semester hours. Um, so right here, if you look up at the, at the boards, it breaks down what we, how we go about doing service and college benefits. I'm not going too in-depth, um, I'm not gonna take too much of your time. That's how it is. Uh, so if you look, part-time and active-duty time, which is a full-time thing, they get the same benefits no matter what. No matter what you go for, no matter what school you attend, they will accept it and Army will afford you the money to go to the college. Also with that, transferable. So if you start at UCCS and you're like, hey, I don't wanna go UCCS anymore, I wanna transfer to out-of-state college. Those college, um, semester hours do transfer over, so that's a big plus with that. Uh, the biggest thing is what happens after, you know, they're done. They continue on and you still use the GI Bill. GI Bill is afforded a four-year degree, doesn't specify what type of degree. So individuals like myself that are working toward a bachelor's at this current moment, um, after I get done with this and, you know, use my GI Bill once I'm out of service, put that towards my masters. So I can, you know, do something more and over, you know, earn over six figures. A lot of people don't understand, like, hey, you can transfer a lot of things. And the next thing is, biggest thing we have to worry is, like I said previously, is, um, the job opportunities that are afforded from the Army. Everyone, like I said, think it's all combat, it's not all combat. We have individuals like my colleague that's sitting down, Sergeant Heredia. Um, he's a law enforcement, he's kinda shy, don't mind him. Uh, he's law enforcement, so he's a military police. That is a day-to-day job, that's what he signed up to do. His job wouldn't have changed unless he's, you know, told the Army like, hey, I love what I love, I love my job at the current moment, but it's not for me. Um, we have, you know, positions without logistics, electronics, satellite communications, aviation. There's a, over 150 jobs that I can't even name off, 'cause I just don't, there's too many to remember, to be honest. Um, we're just really here to, you know, preach to you guys, preach to the kids as we go, you know, school year starts and we're out of the schools. Like, hey, don't think of the military as the last minute thing, to get something, a stepping stone to something that's unknown. It is challenging, it is difficult, it is scary. It's always going to a new, you know, position and a job or going to a new campus you've never been to. So we're just here to, you know, preach that to them as we, you know, get the seniors through and prepare them as well. Um, this next slide that is up at the current moment, um, kinda blurry, can't see it, but I do have printouts for you guys, you guys wanna look more indefinite. This is a breakdown of pay, pay comparison throughout Colorado and how we get paid throughout the military. So on the left, it says civilian, and that breaks down a typical average salary throughout Colorado, shows the typical rent, so on and so forth with utilities and groceries. Um, of course, take that consideration, that's coming out of pocket. Now, what we come into play is we use BAS, which is basic allowance substance, which covers groceries, utilities and so on and so forth. And then we have basic housing allowance, which pays for what I'm using towards my mortgage that I own in, um, Colorado Springs. So on the right, you have US Army, that has individuals that are currently single, that live in the dorms that we provide for them, and individuals that are married. Um, it, it doesn't matter how long you've been married for, if you have a spouse or you have kids to take care of, Army will afford you the funds to take care of your family, 'cause that comes first. Whether stable home, well, stable soldier. Um, a lot of individuals think like, hey, we have to, you know, finance meet, we don't. Some individuals gotta, you know, go crazy with the money. That's something we try to give guidance on, on how to, you know, properly manage. That's what we do day-to-day in the office. We have individuals come in and like, hey, I'm struggling with, you know, my financials. I'm trying to figure out how do I go about moving to the next step to, you know, manage my money properly. Not always there for, you know, military guidance and how to join. So we try to help them and break down where their money's going towards and how they can, you know, recuperate some of that money into their savings. So with that being said, it's, it's, it's a given at this moment. You don't have to work for, you know, a couple of hours to, you know, make ends meet. We get paid twice a month, the first and the 15th, and our check doesn't change. And the way it changes is as we, you know, get promoted to the next rank and next position. And with that, that doesn't, that comes with time and experience, which is, you know, some people come in with 10-plus, you know, in the civilian workforce. Some individuals come in with, you know, zero, right out of high school, ready to go. Um, we don't judge at that base. It is definitely beneficial, benefit to individuals that come in with a little more experience, but in a day you're at a baseline and we're here to, you know, improve individuals and get them to that leadership, leadership position. Any questions at this time? Last but not least, talk about, more about the college. Biggest thing that we noticed, uh, as I've been here for two years is testing. Testing has been the biggest dilemma throughout the schools. Um, the reason why is, you know, the community that's around, you know, Pueblo is not the best. You guys are doing the best you can to, you know, afford these kids opportunity to do more with their life. Uh, what we notice is as we do the ASAP twice a year throughout the schools, one in November and one sometimes in March, uh, scores differ depending on that student, sometimes they spring up, sometimes they just stay stagnant. And what we afford and what we presented to Mrs. Ouch is we have a program that is free of cost that can help you improve your, your testing scores and get more passing rate throughout this district. We go a little bit more in-depth in person. If you're like, hey, I'd like this information, I provide you all the links and all that. Essentially, 31 for you guys is passing, 31 for us is passing. So we can get to that benchmark of getting to the passing rate. They make one graduation requirement, that's one thing to worry about. Um, we do offer that assistance throughout the office. We do work with the counselors over at Pueblo West and that county high school. If a student is struggling in school, we would like to pull them aside and bring them to our office to prepare them and help them, you know, succeed and graduate on time. We don't want no one to fall back.
Hey guys, I'm Captain John Dombey. I'm the company commander for the Colorado Springs Recruiting Company. So I'm Sergeant Hugley's boss's boss. But I, I think the main, the main sell for us is we, we're not just here to like, to, to trick kids or lie to kids or coerce them in any way. Uh, we truly want people who, who want to serve. Um, but we also offer many benefits, even if, even if they're not deciding to serve. So like, for instance, improving their test scores, like, there's no strings attached, like, that's us just helping them out. Um, and one thing I've noticed from being from Canyon City to Pueblo to Colorado Springs is a lot of these Pueblo kids, they don't come from great family backgrounds, which many of you guys know this. And so having the Army there, it's, it's, they're offering mentors, you know, I've, I've been down in the Pueblo station, I've got six recruiting stations. And the Pueblo station is my favorite because there's a sense of community and culture there. And these kids who come from rough backgrounds, they come and they find a place here, they find people who care for them. And not just because they're willing to serve or because they're, they're one of our clients or anything like that. It's because, hey, like, we're trying to help you guys become better just individuals overall. Um, and I think one of the main benefits from the military is, hey, like, you don't have to, you're not giving up your whole life to come and serve, but you're coming to a place where you're held accountable for stuff, there's discipline, but you're also rewarded when you perform well and you do the right thing. Um, and it doesn't even have to be full-time. You know, we have the Army reserves where they can still live in Pueblo. They, they can go do their initial military training, come back, live in Pueblo and have a civilian full-time career and then just do the Army once, once a month on the weekend, um, and two weeks out of the, the summer. And then that's it. And they can still have a full-time career here as a civilian. But I think the, the big gap is just a lack of information. So like, even as a high schooler, I didn't know about the options that the Army or the military offered in general. But it's almost like that parent role for a lot of these kids that come from rough backgrounds. You know, it's someone who will take care of them, they'll be a provider, but they'll also be someone who will, um, in- inspire them to do well and to make themselves better and to help others. And so I think that's, that's really what we wanna put out to you guys, is like, hey, like, we're not trying to come and, and take your kids or to trick them. We're trying to help them become better individuals overall, holistically. And I think the, the gap is just them not having information. Or they see someone in uniform, they're like, oh, they're just trying to trick me or trying to convince me to do something. And that, that's not the case by any means. Uh, we, we truly care about the students here. Like, I'm, I help out with my church's youth group. I'm actually missing our last youth group of the summer tonight to come and, and talk and help out. But we really do care about the, the person and the family as a whole. It's not just, hey, you're meeting a number or a quota for us. It's like, hey, we wanna show you what we have to offer so you guys can make a fully informed decision, um, and that's it. So hoping any questions you guys may have. And, and I do wanna add on, Sergeant Hugley brought up that many of the combat, many of the jobs in the Army are not combat. I myself am a military police officer. I've never deployed overseas, wanted to, didn't have the chance. I've been in almost six years now. And the first thing my mom said when I came home from, from talking to Army recruiters is, oh, you're gonna go and you're gonna die in the Army? And like, that's, that's very much not the case. We're in a peacetime right now, like, less than 10% of the jobs are combat. I haven't gone out, outside the continental USA. And it, it really isn't as bad as a lot of people can, can think it up to be, so just wanna put that out to you guys.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have a presentation of a mill levy override. Mr. Duluga?
Y'all better clap for mine, too. So I think, um, now that we can kinda see numbers and we can see that individuals realize that their property taxes are going up, but we come to find out that our, our school number, our, our funding doesn't go up. So I understand that houses are more expensive, um, life is more expensive. Um, next year we should be fully funded as a school district for the first time in, I think, any of our adult lives. And we're gonna be just a little bit short, so I think it's time to ask our community if they can help us get there. Stay competitive, if not, maybe offer a little more than districts around us. Because at the end of the day, I, I mean, we are the kinder, gentler district, but teachers have bills to pay. And if we can't start the conversation on at least trying, I think that we're missing an opportunity. It will not be for this year's ballot, it'll have to be 24. But I think if we can generate some kind of a survey that will at least test the waters, see what individuals' families think, then I think that, you know, I'll be able to at least sleep a little better at night knowing how everybody else feels. So I think if we're all in the same mind, like, I can take a little extra, I don't, we're not gonna ask for thousands of dollars. I don't even know if it'll be $60 a year, which is all kinda depends on, you know, what, what everybody's want to contribute to this, to continue the high-quality education that we provide our kids, that'll create high-quality citizens that we hope. So just wanted to get that conversation started.
And what kind of items do you think we would use that money for?
I mean, we'll definitely need it for like teacher retention, stuff like that. Um, we'll need safety, security improvements to our schools. This could fund, let's say, projects that we wanna finish. Our bond projects are always super important and we get a majority of the money there, but it seems like we're always just a couple thousand dollars short of finishing the job. And it'd be nice to move forward, we wouldn't have to feel like that anymore. Two years under the belt now, and it feels like they just don't have the money. And I think it's time that we, we asked our community to help us out a little bit extra and see if we can not have to say that anymore, I guess.
I really like this idea. So there were a couple of things that I didn't know coming into this is, one, the mill levy versus the mill levy override. And when the mill levy, if we were to change that, the state actually takes away money to, to adjust it. So it, it doesn't change how much the school gets. If, if it's coming from taxpayers or if it's coming from the state, we get the same amount, whether one's higher and the other's not. With the mill levy override, that it kinda gives it above and beyond, so that way we're actually getting more funding as well.
We actually get to keep this. This would be the district's money only, it can be equalized. And I believe that the state, if you do pass one, they'll even match you a little bit, so we could get a...
They were talking about that, I don't know if that went through yet. I know they're still trying at times.
But we could even maybe get a little more from the state of that. I think it shows initiative. Canyon City has a mill levy override and they're not hurting for teachers. So they're able to pay a little bit better and keep, there's the retention piece of it. So I don't, I don't know. I think it's worth the conversation, though.
I, I think it's a great idea, um, especially for, you know, we wanna get more armed people in our schools, so we have the, the protection that we need. And this is a way that we can, you know, potentially do some of that kinda stuff. That's gonna be an ongoing cost to the district instead of, you know, a one-time fee. And so, you know, some of the grants, and, and they've done awesome with our grants program. Uh, you know, some of that is a great way to get some of that going, but the grants don't always guarantee year after year where this would get that going and, and be sustainable. So I think that's a great idea. Chris?
So you're gonna start a survey, something along that line?
I'd like to, yeah. I'm gonna throw roundabouts on that.
Riot a cyclone alley, right?
So, I, I think, just get the conversation going, let's see what, what our, what our constituents think as far as wanting to contribute to this. There's lots of possibilities, of course, what we could fund with this, we would have to iron that out once we have an idea of what... Once we have an idea of what, what they're willing to contribute.
I think it's important to ask your public whenever you are getting a feel for if, if there's interest in it or not. The, the sort of projects and things that they'd like to see that mill levy applied towards. So that if you do campaign for that, that you're, that we're honoring what the public really does want. And so, you know, if, if the public is willing to fund a mill levy override, then, and they are saying they want that because they want to make sure our teachers' wages are competitive. Then I think it's important to ensure that teachers' wages are competitive. Or if we're saying that we're going to provide safety and security, that we then, you know, work with our sheriff's department to make sure that we have that safety and security. I, I also think it's important for our public to know that, yes, property taxes went up, but there's an equalization factor. And so even though you may be paying more for your property taxes, we don't see that money. They, all of that money goes to the state and they equalize, they equalize it out with what the state gives us versus the property tax. So we still get the exact same amount of money, no matter what. So even if your property taxes went up, we still get the exact same amount of money. So that means that your increase in property taxes is then being redistributed elsewhere. So with a mill levy override, that money, that money does come straight to us for our use. And it does come to us to, to, to do projects and do things that we often can't afford to do. And we are the lowest-funded district in the state of Colorado and mostly because we don't have a mill levy override.
I think this would help our community as a whole too, just as far as the contribution that it would, you know, we could keep better jobs here and, you know. Pueblo has a ton of potential, but we're not, we're not even close to tapping the potential of Pueblo.
And since the beginning of the, you know, west of Mississippi, or even America, the, the schoolhouse has always been the community's, I guess, contribution. So I, you know, we got away from that, I feel like, that, you know, the schoolhouse is no longer my problem when my kid graduates. I get it, but that's not how this place was founded. So I'd like to at least, like I said, we'll get a feel. So Tim can get some kind of a survey together.
That's all on that one.
How did you throw it on Tim's lap?
Where's my claps, damn it?
Okay, next up, we have a presentation of the Pueblo West fields.
Good evening, board. Guests, usually I'm on this side of the podium asking you to approve a gift of thousands of dollars. Now I find myself on the side of this podium, asking you to approve some, spending some money with the thought of safety in mind. So you have two proposals or two quotes in front of you regarding the Pueblo West turf fields. I'll start with the first one regarding Pueblo West stadium field, which houses the football games, soccer games and lacrosse games. That field there is, there's a replacement number on there. You'll also see two line items for some maintenance pieces. I emphasize maintenance pieces because now we look at it and we need to continue to do our maintenance with all of our fields as, as we continue to move forward. The other one that you see as far as the quote is for the existing baseball field. Their infield right now is turf. This quote would take that field from a baseball field to a dual field, dual playing field, which would allow for baseball and softball. The other thing I do want to put a little side note in here is you will also see another approval come across for a removable pitcher's mound as well as a portable fence due to their, their regulations that they have to, to follow and play. Where this is all coming from, I know last year you had a presentation with those fields. As we look at Gmax testing, Gmax testing identifies two, two, two things, two important things, the absorption and impact. And with that, I mean, if I had a quick science experiment, I could drop a bowling ball onto a pillow. And that pillow would, would comfort that ball in, into, as it lands. I drop a bowling ball maybe on a plowed field, it's going to give a little bit and then suddenly come to an end. If I drop a bowling ball on the cement, everyone kind of knows what happens when you drop it on the cement. So basically that Gmax testing is done in various areas. Now what happens over time, if we don't maintain our fields and, and give them the proper maintenance, they turn into that nice soft cushy playing field surface into now we're playing out on, on a pavement piece. So last week, we did decide to shut down both fields due to the potential safety and the impact that could potentially cause to our kids. As far as that plan, we do have backup plan for those kids for football to play at CSUP. And my hat's off to Jamie Wagner and his new AD out there, Bobby Tillman. They've made other arrangements for their, their boys soccer program as well as their lower level football programs to have other sites to host their home football games. With these two quotes in front, in front of you, we're looking at using our cooperative purchasing through Sourcewell to be able to make this happen. Are there any questions?
Okay, let's go ahead and open discussion.
If we, if we go on this, what's the projected completion date for, obviously they'd start on the, on the stadium field first.
Correct, correct. So with the, the start on the stadium field, there is potential that they have secured the turf for manufacturing. It takes two weeks. We could potentially have that delivered on-site at Pueblo West High School by September one. With, again, barring any construction and, and maybe I'm not going to rub your head Ted for good luck. But there's a potential by October one to, you know what I mean, to be, for them to be back on that field. We have made arrangements, if it goes beyond October one, that we have secured sites for Pueblo West High School to at least host, you know, home games at a, at a facility.
So you need this decision today more than if we decided we wanted to think about it for a little while, that would delay that process?
Yes, it would delay that process.
And it would, in turn, would delay the baseball softball field because it'd be a domino effect, correct?
Correct.
So the estimates that we received were to turf the baseball field and the football field as one. So the materials would be as one. That's an estimate, not each individual.
So as you see your quote, they're, they're individual. Okay, so the, the football field at the five hundred and twenty-eight thousand would be, would be that cost for that football field. The one ninety-one is for that baseball softball piece.
But the materials, the turf itself, you get a discount, don't you, if you're buying a certain amount? You're not just...
So I, the, we'll back up. Because it's just a removal and a replacement.
Right.
You're having that crew there existing. So you're not having to bring this crew back. You're not probably having to bring back the equipment and those types of things there. So by, by doing this, yes, it, it probably does offer that opportunity to save, to save a little bit. Because this is a replacement.
Right.
We're not going down and redoing any drainage or, you know, the aggregate surface underneath it or any of that stuff. Yes.
Any other comments?
I mean, we're talking about the safety of the kids, so it's got to be done or they're not playing on it at all.
Now, does this, this would affect band practice or different things like that on the fields as well, correct?
It, it's, the Gmax is based on impact. And so the, the reason we shut it down is because we can't have impact. Could I march across it? Probably. But if I march across it, I also provide opportunities for people to push the limits on that. And plus, we're looking to replace this ASAP. So the sooner we can get on that field and get it replaced, obviously it's not going to have a band marching on it if in two weeks we're starting the replacement of it. So it's, it's not a, it's not dangerous to walk across or march on. It's dangerous to have impact. It's dangerous for kids to fall on, to be hit. So that's, that's the piece, or to take off and slide into third base. That, that is the piece that has become dangerous for kids. And so for us, we did not want to risk our kids. To me, that, that amount of money is a, it's a lot of money, but it's not as much as a hurt child. So.
I have one last question.
Sure.
So the, the one line item on the, for the maintenance, is that in addition to a maintenance program that we have now? Or do we not even have a maintenance program for our fields? Is that why they got to this state?
So let me, I'll back up to last year when, when I walked with a, a company to go look at reconditioning. So we were able to recondition Pueblo County High School and Rye High School last year, right around five thousand dollars for both fields, about twenty-five for both places. We were able to take those fields and, and remove a lot of the trash and other things that were in it. And help with, with the, the spread of that, that inner ground material. As we made our walk with Pueblo West, it was pretty glaring that if they were to do something like that, they'd be following with a crew to repatch what, you know, what may get torn up as well as redo it. My plan to continue this is, yes, reconditioning once again for Pueblo County High School and Rye School, Rye High School, as well as potentially adding some top dressing, so to speak, to continue that life of that turf. Because let's be honest, within four years, we're going to be faced with replacing Pueblo County High School and their turf. Okay, just with that wear and tear. And just to, to mention a couple of things that Ms. Ryan brought up. When they Gmax test, they test across the variety of the field, more in those higher impact areas, twenty-yard line into the goal line, those types. Those are our areas that are, that are fairly high and are at risk. When she brought up the baseball piece, there's a couple of areas on a baseball field where there's a chance for higher collision or higher impact. Around home plate and then the third base. If you look at our results, it's pretty obvious that we need to take action on this in, in the safety for our kids. The other comment I want to make is this. The National Federation for High School Sports has recommendations, okay, as far as what, they recommend a softball field, dimensions and so on and so forth. We fall within those recommendations, okay? When you do a dual-purpose field, they share two lines on the batter box. The other two can be painted with a water-based paint or they make inserts for that to, to go in. So we're going to make this essentially one beautiful field for both male and female to be able to compete on.
If I could jump in on that, I, I think it's important that everybody else, we're, we're not just going to let one field go to waste, collect weeds. We'll, we'll, we'll continue to utilize both fields as, as we work with the schools, we work with administrators, the coaches. So we're, we're not just saying one field, yeah, we're, we're not going to worry about that field anymore because we're doing this. We are still going to work with the, the school, our maintenance group, others to ensure that we do have those facilities available.
So the existing softball field will hold steady?
Yes. It's going to remain right there and, and we will continue to maintain that and improve. Even if it's a practice field for a, a majority of the year, we still want it to be a safe practice field. We want it to be usable practice field, we, you know. So that's, that's still a goal of the district. That's still something we will continue to strive and work for. And we've, we've told the principal that, we've told ADs, the coaches. And, you know, another thing is what we're doing now potentially sets us up for things in the future, maybe past some of our tenures. You know, when, when some of us are, you know, retired and they're still that field and there's still kids coming up behind these current kids. That helps us open up avenues to do more improvements without having to navigate the Title IX restrictions.
Can you explain a little bit more on the Title IX issue that it would, it would satisfy with having a dual-purpose field?
So Title IX is, jump in, Title...
You want me to talk about it?
Title IX is, is just a federal law that, you know, prohibits discrimination based on sex. And so you hear a lot about it with universities, especially with sports around universities, making sure that facilities, programs, et cetera, are equal for both male and females. So when, when you do do improvements to one field that's considered just a field, say like for, for, you know, men's baseball, the expectation is you are also putting forth that kind of effort in the other facilities that serve females, female sports. And it doesn't necessarily mean you have to have the same playing surface, just if you're spending two hundred thousand dollars on one field to make improvements, you should be spending equal amount of money to improve facilities that service females or...
So we meet that requirement on the football field because the football field is not just used by football. It's used by soccer, it's used by lacrosse. So it's, it's used by both males and females. The, the, the baseball field currently, the way it is, is only a male sport. And so by making it dual-purpose, by making it dual-purpose, we make it where it could be utilized by both males and females. But that, like he said, we're not going to let that softball field go. I mean, I'm, I'm quite certain that, that these individuals are playing on both turf and, I don't know, grass, anywhere they go across Colorado. So it's good to practice on both sides of that. Like Bob said, this, this helps us in the future if we're looking to put in a press box, if we're looking to put in lighting. We can't afford to put in lighting in a press box for two fields. We can't afford to turf every field and then come back every ten to twelve years and re-turf them again. Now, if you pass a mill levy override, you know, maybe, but we don't have that in the bag yet. And so we have to make sure that our kids are safe and that they have a surface to play on that is safe. And for me, this, this makes the most sense. I know that it's not always the most popular decision, but we have to make the best decision for our kids.
Maybe, and this could be, you know, it doesn't happen every year, but having, having two fields that we could potentially have two softball games on does allow our softball team to host a, a regional. Because in order to host a regional, you have to have two fields based on the, the team and the format. A few years back, Pueblo West did host a regional. They had to do it at the Lovell Park in Pueblo West because they needed two fields to do it on. So they're playing on a field that, again, they've never played on, practiced on, et cetera. So I mean, again, there, there are benefits to long-term outcomes as well.
Do you have a question?
Yeah. Where's this money coming from?
Well, the magic pot of money that Amanda's found for, no. So we had reallocated, we had re, or we had taken bond money and we had gotten TIF money. And TIF money was money that we had said we would apply towards Pueblo West High School's parking lot. And so all of that money went to Pueblo West parking lot. But we said we would then relocate half of that money, which was around two point, two point three million dollars, back to other bond projects. And so that would be coming from bond money.
So we have enough to cover these?
Yes. We do.
Is there any public comment? Yes, go ahead.
So I think the concern is that, you're saying that the filter and safety was that testing done on the current dirt softball field would be something that I would be curious to know. Because if we're speaking of safety, but we're redoing the baseball field, they're not currently in season. So that means that the softball team is playing on a field that's potentially deemed unsafe. So that brings a concern for me that we're saying, okay, this field isn't safe enough, so let's go fix this one while these girls are in season. When I don't know how long it would take to do the turf, but it seems like the turnaround time on a softball-sized field would be less of a turnaround time than on a football field. So you could potentially have the girls playing on a much safer, more maintainable surface rather quickly. The other piece of that is just knowing that both of those fields are highly utilized by not only the kids who play those respective sports at the school, the baseball players are constantly working on their craft, on their field, year-round. The softball players, to the extent that they can, because it's not turf, work up there constantly. And the coaches for both of those programs are very available to their student athletes and members of the community as a whole, not just during their two or three months of season for both of those sports. So that is a concern. Who's going to take priority when those kids want to go up there and work because their weather season is basically the same? When you're talking about converting something into a softball dimension field, okay, so are you going to convert that for one hour a day? And then take it down so that a baseball player can go and use the facility? That's not very feasible. The other piece of that is to say that the standards would be met of field dimensions. That may be true, but anybody who has been to a lot of softball games and in a lot of baseball games such as myself, know that even if those standards fit, it is not comparable. and in a lot of baseball games, such as myself, know that even if those standards fit, it is not comparable. I have a son who's playing college baseball right now. We watched him grow up and go through the entire process. Their field is very different and it's not only a outfield fence that makes that difference. I have a daughter who played baseball for, first till she was 14. She's now the catcher for Pueblo West on the softball team. And I can tell you that those dimensions are very, very different. The backstop dimensions, you can bring in things to line the field, you can bring in portable fences, you can bring in a different home plate. The backstop is not the same. You're talking about the same depth of a backstop for a catcher whose runners are 60 feet away versus a catcher whose runners are 90 feet away. That is not comparable. It's not. It's not during a wild pitcher, fastball. It's not during even a play to the outfield and a ball gets by somebody. So, you're not solving the problem. This is not fair to either team or consistent. It is actually a disservice to both programs in this school that's very large and should be able to have two fields. You cannot practice and play on dirt and turf. I don't know, you know, that's something we have very big experience with. You cannot send half of your softball team to a dirt field to practice and then expect them to play on turf. The game is very different. The ball comes off it very differently. That alone is a safety issue. You have kids that wear masks on turf because the velocity of the ball is much, much different. You can't host a regional where you expect teams to come in and play with you, part of the games on a dirt field and part of the games on a turf field. When we travel to places that have these regional tournaments, you go to places that either have multiple dirt fields or you go places that have multiple turf fields. It's not interchangeable. So I think those things haven't been considered. And not only is it a disservice to the girls, but it's a disservice to the boys program too and the community as a whole.
Have some more discussion?
I don't have anything else.
I was just going to address, she, she made the comment about the safety of the softball field. Gmax testing is not done on natural surface. You know, for example, the dirt field or, or natural grass. Gmax testing is done on those artificial surfaces deeming that safety. We wouldn't touch the softball field existing right now to mess with obviously the softball season as we go. Now, guess what? I probably need to take a walk out there in case there are some gopher holes or those types of things that we need to address. But as far as the, the reconstruction of the softball field, that, that doesn't happen. We're just going to continue to maintain that. Our focus is on the replacement of the infield of that baseball, baseball facility. Mr. Christensen, earlier, I, I'm not sure if I answered your question about the maintenance piece. Those two items on that, on that proposal, or on that quote, are to add to help to be able to maintain our fields. I believe Pueblo County has the old groomer and they call it a litter cat. And no, it doesn't do what some of you think it does. It just picks up the trash on, on the pieces. So, you know, we'll start to, to be able to maintain these things as we, as we go about our season. Because they do have requirements, you know? Field usage, every month you should be running your groomer in this pattern or that pattern. And, and this company, they're, they're able to help us out with that, as well as provide some hands-on training for our maintenance department, which all of you are aware of, is, is headed in the right direction.
So, quick question. What do you think it would cost to provide maintenance on the softball field since we are looking at re-turfing the baseball field? So since it is grass, or we try to have it grass, what, what do you think that would cost?
Let me make sure I'm understanding your question correctly.
So to re-saw it or to re-
So they just redressed, I believe they just redressed it. They just redressed it and they replanted it. So they brought in topsoil and they redressed it and then replanted it. And then, and obviously when you replant grass, you get weeds. And so, they're, they're waiting to weed and seed it, once that, that, once that grass thickens up so that they can get that softball. I don't disagree, we need to invest in that softball field as well.
What is the estimate though on the price of that, of doing that?
But to re-turf the softball field was around 300,000 extra dollars, which we do not have. Because you would have to dig out all of that and then you would have to then put in that turf. And so, it's not like just a replacement, it's a digging out and then, and then completely redoing it. If I could afford that, I would love to do that for you guys. I just can't afford to do, to do both and the football field.
We, we do appreciate the, the comments and we have had-
Absolutely, we've talked about all that.
Everything that you've talked about, we have discussed and looked at. And that's, I think, again, that's our stance is, we're, we're going to continue to, to, to look at ways to improve all facilities. And, and that, that's, that's our goal. So, thank you for sharing those. I, I'm very familiar with both sports as well, being, being a parent. So we understand the challenges and talk with the coaches and know their, both coaches very well. So, we, we, we've been listening, we've been trying to figure out, we'll continue to work with the school. And we'll, we'll do our best to make things work. And this, this is money we fortunately have right now to do that replacement, which we need to take advantage of. We don't know, you know, if that's going to be money we'll have down the road, so.
Well, I know we won't have that money down the road. Because once we're finished with the bond, I mean, the bond will, will take all of that money. And so I know that we don't have money in the future to do that. And so, I feel like we're trying to capitalize on what we do have from that TIF money at this time to try to do as much as we possibly can to make the best of a, we know, a not ideal situation.
So you're saying that we would want to do both fields right now? So if we just did the football field, that would make any sense?
Well, I'm not sure where baseball, what, what, where would baseball play right now? Because we have to shut that field down because of the Gmax ratings. So, if we don't do that baseball field right now, I don't know where baseball would play.
And they don't have to figure that out?
Yeah.
But even if, if it was 50,000 into the softball field, because of Title IX, that still wouldn't justify, that, that wouldn't work if we're spending 200,000 on the baseball field.
Correct.
So by doing them together, we're now satisfying that-
Meeting Title IX.
And setting ourselves up for more potential-
But we're not saying that we're, we're going to shut that softball field down.
Right.
I'm, I'm not saying we're not going to still continue to invest in that softball field. We are still going to continue to invest in that softball field.
So, so two, two concerns, right? So we're not asking for turf on the softball field. It's not at all what we're implying. We're simply stating that, yes, we're doing this for the football field, we're doing this for the baseball field. Would there be something that we could do for the softball field? Secondly, and, and I think a bigger concern would be, to make it a multi-sport field and only do the infield, you're actually going to split the outfield on the softball field, half turf, half grass. There's no way to do it if you just turf the infield and make it a playable softball field because you will split the outfield, half turf, half grass.
I, I agree.
So can we not, can we not come up with a way to improve the softball facility? I'm not saying turf it, but there's a lot that can be done to make that a very nice and comparable complex. If, if you go out there now, there's a very obvious disparity between the two fields. You know, we have to bring people in and try to cover top dugouts, because the girls don't have covers. There are a lot of things that do not cost 300,000 dollars that can turn that softball field into a very, very nice, top of the line facility for that program while maintaining the baseball team's facility also.
Can I jump in on what you're, I think, what y'all need to grasp is, when we put 200K into a baseball field, we have to put 200K into the softball field. And we don't have the 200K. So the only way to meet Title IX is to address both.
But you're not addressing both by having a field that is not playable for softball.
I think that's the concern.
That's the concern.
Can't the Title IX be-
I understand.
So I, I don't have, I don't have a choice but to make it dual. I don't, because of Title IX. But I'm not-
And I can tell you, we will not have teams that will come play a regional here-
But I'm, I'm not, not committing to, to help your softball field either. I'm not saying that we aren't going to put money into your softball field. I'm just saying, I do, I can't legally just fix the so, the baseball field and make it a baseball field.
What's the timeframe on Title IX?
You know, if you, maybe we'll never convert it. So you're not, we're not forcing you, hey, we're doing this 200,000 dollars, you have to use this field, only this field. We're not saying that, at all.
And that's understood.
You're, you're not guaranteed like-
We're not saying-
Within the next five years, we're doing that.
Put enough money into the softball field to make it playable. There are things that I know the coach has asked for that are really, Coach Montez is like the least high maintenance person you will ever meet in your life. So there are things that he has asked for dugouts. That's a huge one. To have actual dugouts for the girls, that's a big deal for them. And just like the dirt that's brought in, because that is a safety concern. I know my kids use the field during all years, almost every year that they can. And the dirt there is a big concern. So I get that you can't, you can't put 200,000 dollars into each facility. But I feel like there are some things that can be done to make the softball field a perfectly playable and really nice facility. Because the community takes a lot of pride in that. That's where these girls play their home games. And that's something that they are the only school in Pueblo County that has that advantage of playing those games at home. So it is, I, I get what you're saying with Title IX, but really at the end of the day, if you're not looking at what it looks like on paper, it's taking away.
But one, all it takes is for one person to, to say that it is a problem. And I, I believe your coach also doesn't think that's a problem. I, I agree, your coach is, is, has indicated that the softball field is, is a good place for them to play and, and is amenable to where it, it currently is. But if one person says that it's not, then it is a problem. It is a Title IX problem. Right.
But is that what you're saying by not providing an actual play field for girls?
Well, they will have.
But we were still-
Of the existing field.
Will you leave it up to the coaches to schedule playing time on the fields and their practice times? Would that be up to them?
Yes, and I think the biggest part of it is going to be in-season, right? Those in-season sports have that priority.
Right.
Okay? So, we'll, I mean, we can work those things out. I think the biggest thing that maybe I want to say here, as I look around in this room, I think all of us know that we've inherited this, this animal, right? By what was done previous, as far as the, the great donation, the upgrade to the baseball field and everything else. Right now as a district, we're trying to look out in the long run and being able to make a correction now that's going to take care of those discrepancies and those inequities, right? They mentioned it. You walk out there right now and you see that. It's glaring of that. This is going to offer that opportunity. And yes, in-season will have priority over those, you know, which field they're practicing on, playing on, you know, preparing for, and then they go.
I, I would like you guys to know that I completely understand where you're coming from. My, my, my granddaughter played softball there for a couple of years and it, it, it's not the same. And it was, it was really heartbreaking. But, you know, I, I kind of like went with it. She, I knew she was going to be a, a professional softball player. And I knew she wasn't going to get a scholarship into, into college for softball. But she enjoyed playing the game. And sometimes I think we forget that it is a game and it should be enjoyed. And, and I, I would love, everybody here would love to have, you know, the, the biggest, the bestest, the, you know, you know, I, I've been, I've been the biggest proponent for a, a Olympics, a swimming pool for this school for, for decades. And that hasn't happened. And, so, yes, I, I, my heart goes out to you because I totally get where you're coming from. I really do. You know, the dugouts, the, 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 even the bleachers to, to even watch the games, horrible, right?
It's not great that it's their field, and they have a lot of positivity. They, they can face that. So if we can make it safe and playable for them and not a second thought. I get that on paper it has to be that.
I promise you, it's not a second thought. It's not a second thought. We've been talking about it for two weeks. We've been talking about it.
Two weeks?
Just know that our child will be, I mean, she's going to be a junior, so this doesn't necessarily impact her a ton right now. And she's my youngest, so this is more of a-
Long-term.
It's a long-term thing that, that just doesn't make sense. And that's, I, I get it on paper, but we thought, we owed it to our girls and the future girls there to say, because it makes sense on paper, doesn't need to make sense in real world. So, I just ask that as you go forward to make those improvements to a multi-purpose field, you do look at, even if it meets the requirements, trying to find solutions that make it a nice playable field for both sports.
Is, is there something that you could maybe come up with, with figures or whatever, that might be doable for some, you know? And, and, and bring it, bring it back to the board?
So tonight, we are voting on turfing, on saying, go ahead and turf the football field and the baseball field as soon as possible. That would be our vote tonight. So, what we have to take into consideration is, is it appropriate to do both fields? Because the softball field would not get a vote to have work done right away. That's the thing. We would have to push this off-
Right.
-to have more discussion about it.
Absolutely.
So tonight, we need, we know we need to be working on the football field right away because their season is right now.
Right.
And it's unplayable.
Right.
Same with baseball. Baseball's, they're, they're not till the spring, but they still utilize it. So, that's something that we're going to have to think about right now, is how we want to do that.
I want to guess maybe that my question would be, do you have it broken down to the point where the modifications that you would have to make to the baseball field to convert it toward softball season, does that have a budget number that you could then say, okay, with that, what can we do? I mean, because really what you're looking at is spaces and outfield content. So, I get it, but that's just our concerns and our thoughts, so.
Thank you guys for hearing us. We definitely appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for all the clarification on everything, Mr. Baumgartner. Appreciate it.
And like I said, the, the additional expense with that portable mound and fence is right around 25,000 dollars.
Okay.
On a high end. So hopefully we can come in lower than that, but I am putting that up there.
Okay.
Okay? Anything else?
I think that's it for now. Thank you.
You're off the hot seat.
But you can't follow that up, Mr. Christensen.
Sure I can.
Next up, we have a presentation of revisions to policy GCD.
That's easy.
Yes, policy GCD is professional staff vacations and holidays. Revisions to this policy would include eligibility for vacation leave for administrative and certified staff to include two components. One, that the employee is assigned to work 12 months per year. And two, has a minimum of 208 contract days. It also addresses an inconsistency that we had within our negotiated agreement in this policy. In that a few years ago, we changed the negotiated agreement to say vacation time could be taken in 15-minute increments. So this updates the policy to match that language. And it also makes a maximum accrual of vacation days at 40 days. So it'd be the revisions to this policy. Any questions?
No, thank you. Okay, next up, we have a bond project update. Mr. Otteras.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board, superintendents. So we're down to two days. I've been given updated days since the students broke for summer break, but we're down to two days and we've made a lot of progress. I'll kind of start with the interior renovations. The interior renovations have went extremely well. Pueblo County High School is, is ready to go. We're doing some final touches today. Mr. Gates purchased a couple of 75-inch TVs for those two classrooms. They're furnished, teacher desks are there. All the casework has been installed, so those rooms are usable. We'll be working with Mr. Delco to do numbering for those. There's going to be a numbering process we'll go through explicitly at Liberty Point Elementary School because we added so many different rooms and hallways. And we want to make sure that safety is first and foremost. As if fire or ambulance come out, police come out, they need to know what room 111 is or 115, what the different corridors are. So, we're working with the architects to, to, to tease that out, but that's in process right now. Violent Elementary School, the, the library media center has gone extremely well. It's way ahead of schedule. We didn't project furniture arriving till around September 15th. So, the space is pretty much ready. Gooch is in there, he's got a lot of work to do. He's cataloging all the books in the media center as we speak. But the space is absolutely great. The IT closet that was built is really going to take care of a lot of those IT heat issues and switches and all those kind of things that the IT guys really like. So, we're excited about that. North Mace Elementary School, we did the ADA bathrooms. That is complete and ready to go and usable. Uh, at South Mesa, South Mesa Elementary School, uh, we put in all the cassettes for the HVAC. Uh, those been soffited in. Um, we added some additional lighting. Uh, the principal wanted it a little bit brighter underneath that because it was creating a little bit of a shadow with the soffit. Um, so we added the extra lighting. We used, um, some of the lighting that we took out of Pleasant View Middle School and transferred it over to South Mesa. So we had, um, some savings on that lighting. And it really improves, uh, that space for our students. Um, that, again, at Liberty Point Elementary School, uh, the interior is absolutely fantastic. Uh, we created and, uh, made that space a lot safer. Uh, we had some separating floor issues. Uh, we went in and skin coated that, leveled that out, floated a lot of floors. Um, we put in LVT throughout the entire school. Uh, we even took care of some stair issues. We re-carpeted vestibules, repainted pretty much the entire school. Uh, but the school is absolutely phenomenal. Uh, I'm excited. Unfortunately, Mother Nature has been, uh, playing tricks with me and I can't control that. But, uh, um, we're working to get that parent and bus loop, um, done and at least drivable. Uh, for Monday, we'll be pushing all through the whole weekend, uh, to get that, uh, project on task. Craver Element, uh, Craver Middle School, uh, we went in there. Uh, we had an area of the new, a newer addition of the school that was kinda settling. Uh, we took care of all those issues. We floated the floor out. Those three classrooms have received, uh, new tiled carpets. So if we have a stain, we can easily, easily lift those and, uh, re-adhere those to the floor. Um, they got LVT throughout, um, the school, which it really looks nice. Uh, the little commons area was re-carpeted, the stairs were redone. Um, it looks great. Uh, their HVAC is, is, uh, being dialed in, but it's nice and cool. So, uh, we won't start, uh, the school year with swamp coolers, uh, in, in that particular school. Uh, so we're. What's that? We, John, John has the hookups. And at Beulah, again, that, that interior renovation is, uh, is going extremely well. That was a really big lift in the small window that we had. Um, but we're creating a safer vestibule, um, access to, uh, the other hallway and classrooms. We created a corridor in there. Um, again, added, upgraded a lot of the HVAC that, uh, desperately was needed out there, even though it is a mountain community, it is cool. I mean, it gets warm in those buildings, so we're taking care of that. Um, and, um, I don't know if you've noticed, but at Cedar Ridge Elementary School, uh, we're moving dirt and, uh, we're, have a tentative groundbreaking, uh, September seventh. So we're, we're work. Sorry?
For?
For Cedar Ridge Elementary School.
I know, but for, what's the groundbreaking for?
Well, so we're doing the classroom addition out there. And, uh, Basset has already started, uh, some of the earthwork. And, uh, Schwarzer's figures out there, uh, creating that footprint for those four additional classrooms that we have going in there. But we're waiting for students, uh, to come back so we can, um, kinda like we did last summer with, with Avondale. We had students in hard hats and little shovels and it was a good event. And, uh, Mr. Axworthy helped with some light refreshments for everybody and for students. And it was, uh, it was, we're hoping to, um, replicate that out when we do that groundbreaking. And again, tentatively, it's September seventh, but as it gets closer, we'll, we'll definitely iron up those, those, uh, days. So on the screen, I'll kinda flip over to the civil projects. You can see right here, this is Sierra Vista Elementary School. Um, I, my hats off to, uh, the Pueblo West Metro District and Pueblo County Government with really working with us, uh, working with our civil engineer on creating and allowing us to, um, bring folks off of Spalding and turning into, creating a decal lane. Um, the county and the metro district are working out some of the kinks with, uh, taking over all the roads. But you can see the blue, um, access will be, uh, the parent loop will loop around the entire school. Um, it'll make a little bit of a U-turn. The kids will get dropped off in the same spot going into the cafeteria and then circling out of the park, around the parking lot and out onto Spalding. So we feel like this is tremendously, tremendously safer than, uh, lining up, uh, parents down Spalding. So, uh, sheriff and fire, everybody's, uh, really excited about the opportunity of creating a safer space, uh, for our parents and for students. The other, uh, do you have Liberty Point Elementary School?
I'm trying. I can't escape to get out. It's not built.
So we've been, uh, again, working real hard at Liberty Point Elementary School. Uh, again, the weather has just, uh, really slowed us down in the sense that, um, once we feel like we got proof roll and, and we're, uh, having, uh, C T L Thompson go out and verify proof roll, uh, then we get a big rain. And then we have soft spots. And, and anytime you get rebound when we're, uh, driving, uh, you know, the thirty-five thousand pound, uh, pound vehicle over and you have rebound, well, that is future issues. So we've been really trying to heal up, uh, those areas. And it's really, um, on, I guess it would be the north end of the school, um, where that purple line is next to the park is where we really have, uh, a lot of issues. But, um, again, here at Liberty Point Elementary School, we're taking students, um, off of Gila Drive, putting them on our property. Uh, they'll circle around the school. It'll be a stacking process. Uh, they'll turn right and go down, uh, what's, which is our property. Uh, go down that back, the backside of the school and come through the front, drop their students off in the front and then exit onto Hans Peak. Um, nothing, uh, changes with the bus loop. The bus loop will remain the same. It's the yellow line that you see there. Um, buses will come in there, drop off students, and we'll, uh, escort them across, uh, the walkway into the building. So, um, we started a lot of the civil, uh, project drainage, uh, last summer. And we're trying to tie it all together and get that water to kinda sheet off of Hans Peak into the metro district's detention pond. The other one that, uh, we're not, uh, putting up today, uh, is, uh, Pueblo West High School. And it's, it's a big, big parking lot. It's a big project. I think we have a really nice picture that Tim has taken. So we were out today and we, uh, had a conversation with our principal, Mr. Wagner, and his staff about what it looks like. And we talked with our civil engineer and created three different access points. And, uh, when we were out there, we thought it might be a little bit of an easier, uh, path to only create one, um, access in with three outs. So, and plus we'll use Cyclone Alley as one of the, one of the other options to drop off. But we're practicing that tomorrow at ten o'clock. We're gonna practice both iterations. So we have two different iterations. One of them is almost like a airport where you pull in, drop off, keep going, turn out, or you keep going down and drop off depending on, um, where your student needs to be at. So, uh, it'll be more of an, like an airport, um, design. And we're gonna tease that out again tomorrow at ten o'clock. We have practice happening. Um, of course, uh, our team will be in full force on Thursday. Um, that's when we have all our freshmen, uh, uh, first day of school. So there, most of them, uh, are, are dropped off and we'll get a good sense of how that goes and how that operates. And, you know, our goal is to ensure that the student's safety and staff's safety is paramount. So we wanna get a good practice in and make sure that, uh, we're, we're doing our due diligence. So as soon as we have that practice tomorrow, I'll touch base with, uh, Mr. DePietro and Ms. Ryan on, on what we, what iteration we're gonna go with. And then we'll push it out to parents once again to, to make sure that, uh, everybody's on board. But, uh, it's, it's, uh, looking fantastic out there. There's, there's a lot of work, uh, in those lots. So we had to do a lot of healing of that lot too, the, the lot to the south. Um, it was, it was in bad shape. And even the, uh, bus and parent loop was, uh, completely saturated. And, um, we're, we're addressing those to get some long-term life out of this, uh, this project. And again, Phase Three is the stadium and the tennis courts and that area around the backside. And then Phase Four is Cyclone Alley. And we're, we're, uh, working with the metro district and the county to, uh, transfer that property over to the district. So, uh, we're excited about that. I'm sorry?
You still need that dollar?
We're, we're, I'm gonna call on it and, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll sign it and send it, right?
They said we had to put a roundabout there though, right?
Well, no, so that was. You got me, you got, you got me, Dr. Wilson. That was, that was for, for, uh.
So I, I have a question for you. What's showing in the blacktop right now is the parking places. Are, are, is this an, a drawing or is this actually done? Cause I was out there last week and all in the student parking, there was like a probably fifteen-foot pile of dirt.
That's, that's an actual picture.
That's an aerial photo today.
That's a photo from this morning.
Oh. From, from, from your toy?
You got a lot done?
Yeah, so it's, uh, it's, it's really turning out.
That looks good, really good.
Nice, yeah.
That looks really good.
And, and if I can, I just have to commend, um, Tim and Monroe and, and Kim Demisal and, uh, the maintenance team that really, um, they're really helping toe the line. Um, as we take on these additional projects, um, there's a lot of legwork and a lot of cooperation with the department. So sometimes the bond is purchasing materials and the maintenance guys are doing the install. Um, so we're working collaboratively to make sure that we deliver the best product for the best price.
Looks really good.
It does. It's, it's a lot of, a lot of, uh, it's like, I'm back, I'm back in college. I'm back to drinking Red Bulls and eating N'Asids like they're M&Ms.
So there's no more five-inch cracks in the, in the, in the, in the parking lot?
The, the parking lot is phenomenal. So, and, and if anytime, any of the board members, I had the pleasure of having, uh, Mr. DeLuca. Every, uh, Tuesday, we do every Tuesdays, Tuesdays, two days with Ted. And, uh, uh, Dr. Wilson had joined us also, uh, one day and we went out and toured some of the schools. So, uh, it was a good thing. So anytime any of the board members would like to get out, please let me know. I'd be happy to show you.
I have one quick question. What's the plan with the Ry Elementary lower parking lot and loop and all that now that? Cause that's supposed to get, uh, repaved, right?
No, so the bulk of the dollars now went to correct the ADA issues at the entry. That's why we created the bus, I mean, the, um, the handicap accessibility. Where you, you, it's a, like, lost for words. But, um, we built the ramp, right? And then we have the landing. And then we have another ramp and then a landing, um, because we weren't meeting ADA. So even with all the stairs that we re-poured and, um, the fire asked us to widen that so that they can get a pumper truck in there. So we added additional two feet into that parent loop. But, um, it was never in the scope to redo, um, the bottom loop. Uh, we did a small patch that I approved at, um, where you drive into the parent loop. Uh, just cause it alligatored so bad and it was deteriorating, um, quickly. So, uh, we did a small patch in there.
Oh, that's my misunderstanding, yes, but.
And we're doing a lot of civil work on the backside, John. So all that drainage, we're fixing a couple of draining, drainage issues from downspouts. Uh, and all of that back, uh, area is gonna be a lot safer and should be able to shed that water down. And then it'll just settle in the, in the grassy area.
Right.
So that's, that's the scope that, uh, we've been working on. So it's just, uh, the front and the back civil work, uh, making it ADA compliant. Cause we were not.
Well, that's my bet. I thought that lower parking lot was part of it, so.
No.
It's my misunderstanding.
No, it is, it is not.
Well, poop.
Well, I, 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 I know, I wish, uh, uh, we had more dollars, right?
Yeah. It's always about the money.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Any questions for me, folks?
No, thank you.
Thanks, thanks, thanks.
Thanks, Ted.
Yep.
Hey, next up, we have open forum. Are there any comments this evening?
Yes, um, one, Ms. Shannon Herrera?
No.
That was you. Oh, that was all.
She already talked about it.
Well, all right. Thank you. Your three minutes is up.
Okay, first up, we have approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four benefits and carriers. Mrs. Russell?
Yes, I would recommend that the board approve the benefit plans and carriers for the November we've, uh, renewal as presented by benefits broker.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the benefits and carriers?
So moved.
I second.
John Christensen?
Yay.
Chris DeLuca?
Yay.
Kathy Howland?
Aye.
Ann Ouch?
Yay.
A.J. Wilson?
Yay.
Motion carried.
Next item is approval of revisions to policy GCD.
Yes, I recommend that the board approve revisions to policy GCD as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve the revision?
So moved.
I second.
Uh, John Christensen?
Yay.
Chris DeLuca?
Yay.
Kathy Howland?
Aye.
Ann Ouch?
Nay.
A.J. Wilson?
Yay.
Motion carried.
Okay, next up, we have our new action item, which is approval of the Pueblo West High School football and baseball field to be re-turped. Do I have a motion to approve the re-turfing of these two fields?
So moved.
I second.
John Christensen?
Yay.
Chris DeLuca?
Yay.
Kathy Howland?